Good morning. Trustee Criswell, can you hear us okay?
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I had to get myself off mute. Yes, I can hear.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees to order this Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Cheryl, could we have roll call please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Vice Chair Criswell.
Here.
Trustee Gilstrap. Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Trustee Ricketts.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs Andreu.
Here.
Thank you. For today's special agenda, we have two executive sessions. So at this time I call for a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel with possible action to follow in open session for a five-minute duration. Open session will take place in the Pioneer Career Center Conference Room and in the virtual meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board members will be allowed time to travel to the special meeting room.
Randy, if you can hear us, we're ready to go back live again. We're live. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to return to open session, please?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. From our executive sessions, we have action on the first executive session. Dr. Moser, do you want to read the wording of that?
Sure. Let me get that real quick. Regarding the first executive session, I'm looking for a motion to approve the master faculty contract for the FY 2025 year. And as I do that, I just also want to emphasize and what a great job everyone did working on this contract together, both the administration and the faculty. And the contract was, for the first time, we understand unanimously approved by the faculty body. So we're looking for a motion to approve the master contract for 2025.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. This time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Trustees to order this Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by by Trustee Ash.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll read the KCKCC mission statement, which is to inspire individuals and enrich our community one student at a time. Cheryl, could we have roll call, please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Vice Chair Chriswell.
Here.
Trustee Gilstrap. Trustee Hoskins Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Trustee Ricketts.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs Andreu.
Here.
Thank you. Next, could we please have a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the audience to patrons and petitioners. I'd invite the public to raise their hands in the chat or approach the podium for the opportunity to address the board. Addresses must state their name and address for the record before making their comment or question. There is a three-minute time limit. Do we have anyone in the chat?
There is no one in the chat.
I see none approaching the podium. So next, we will move on to our recognitions and presentations. I would invite the presentation of the LinkedIn Hiring Pilot Review presented by Mr. Ryan Cooven and Mr. Eric Mora of LinkedIn. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not texting a friend, just getting our time ready. Five minutes here. All right. Awesome. Thank you all so much for having us this morning. My name is Ryan Cooven. I oversee all of LinkedIn's new higher education partnerships in the central United States.
I echo the gratitude for you opening your doors to us. My name is Eric Mora. I oversee our new and scaled academic partnerships across North America at LinkedIn. We're going to start with some data here for us to see exactly what LinkedIn has been capable of and what we're delivering on. What you're seeing is a snapshot of our LinkedIn Talent Insights portal, which aggregates data from our 1 billion member network into actionable insights for our partners like KCKCC. More specifically on this slide, we're seeing higher education professionals in the Kansas City metropolitan area. You'll notice there's over 44,000 of them. That's part of what led to the excitement in our partnership. Beyond that, there are insights such as seeing which skills are the fastest growing. And this contributes to economic development where we can guide our partners in seeing what are the residents of our metropolitan area actually interested in? What are the highest needs of skills to feel the fastest growing industries? And insights like those are what really make our partnerships so productive and successful.
Great. Thank you, Eric. When I first started working with the KCKCC team back in May of this year, our big picture goal was to competitively position the college as an employer of choice. There were three overarching goals that we dwindled that down to that we wanted to set out to accomplish. Number one, cast a wider net and spread the reach of our jobs. Number two, shift our approach to proactively source and tap into passive candidate pools, ensuring that we're not just relying solely on inbound applicant pools, especially for director level, senior level positions that are very high priority. And lastly, drive employer brand awareness at scale. Highlight what makes the college a special place to work: our culture, our values, et cetera. With four months of data, we have executed on these goals and made an impact. The promoted jobs received 230,622 impressions, leading to 1,153 applicants. Number two, the sourcing team has contacted 698 new candidates boasting a 33.7% response rate. And number three, KCKCC's LinkedIn company page has gained 793 new followers and 3,403 page views. As a bonus, we have confirmed three hires from LinkedIn in these four months, one of which was the Chief Human Resources Officer position, which was a very high priority role we were seeking to achieve from the start of this. The second one was a professor of psychology role, showcasing that this does work for faculty hiring as well. And the third one we just confirmed was an administrative assistant role as well. Therefore, colleges and universities leverage LinkedIn to build off positive momentum just like this that has been created in talent acquisition and economic development.
Going back to a bit of data here, we're looking at, I know this is a little small to read, so I'll paint a picture of really the candidate journey. And what you're seeing in the orange column is our partnership data from the last four months. The column to the right of that are the eight months prior. And I want to focus on two specific outcomes here that have been really powerful for us. Number one is awareness, meaning how many sets of eyes have been exposed to the KCKCC brand? In the eight months prior, there were 10 on LinkedIn. During the course of this four-month partnership, we're nearing 300,000 sets of eyes that have, again, been able to take in your mission, your vision, your job opportunities. And from an engagement standpoint, now we're taking action here. These are the outcomes that we really want in clicks and engagement. Prior the eight months, we were at none. And currently, we've ballooned up to 19,000, which is very exciting in a short window of time and leads to a bright promise for the future.
And zooming into the jobs specifically that we've been promoting on LinkedIn for KCKCC, I want to focus on the fact that this chart is from May to August.
One minute.
13.6 K views, 850 applicants, May to August. On the right, I added September. And that went from 13.6 to 19.4, 850 applicants to over 1,100. So it's creating the snowball effect that is really starting to build momentum and gain momentum quickly.
Outside of the data, I want to leave you with a powerful anecdote and words directly from our KCKCC talent acquisition team. I'll give you a moment to read this. And my biggest takeaway here is that we're really excited for the bright future, as I mentioned already, because we're allowing teams and empowering teams to do more with less in a time where it's increasingly critical. By using data, artificial intelligence, automation, we're really helping teams do more. And we're so excited for the future of this partnership. Thank you again for having us here.
Thank you. Very good. I might just add, if I may, as before they, we do any questions. You may be asking, well, why did we bring LinkedIn to present? And we just wanted to emphasize, you know, the competition for talent just gets tougher and tougher each year. So I think with Dr. Baylog's guidance, we started to look at using more direct targeted recruitment efforts and using LinkedIn because of they have so many customers, viewers, et cetera. So we just wanted to share the results of what has taken place these last three months or so and kind of take a look at how we continue to move forward as we, I mean, we've had really great hires in this last round or some replacement positions and new positions, et cetera. So we wanted to just share that information with the board.
Thank you. I have a half question, half comment. Thank you for all that you do. And I have shared with Dr. Baylog how excited I was the first time I saw one of our ads posted on LinkedIn. Share with this, like, give me 15 seconds, that benefit of not, of looking for, what's my word? Passive applicants versus just those that have the open to work.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question, too. So on LinkedIn, so many folks are not actively out there looking, applying to tens of twenties of jobs at a time, but they're open to the right opportunity should it present itself. So what we're helping the college do is place your job opportunities in front of the Kansas City community proactively, rather than retroactively or relying on organic traffic to the website.
Thank you. And we like our CHRO, too.
We don't allow us to target other regions across the country. So think of those areas where it's high standard of living. People are wanting to exit, also environmental factors, you know, attracting people from Florida, Minn, Alabama, Purdue.
Right.
California, expensive cost of living, think of Kansas City, Denver, Seattle, New England. So trying to attract people to opportunities that we have available. And if they want to be part of the transformation of this institution moving forward, it's an exciting opportunity.
That's great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If no other questions, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next, I would invite the presentation of the Annual Assessment Report presented by Mr. Jerry Pope, Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Good morning. First of all, so we have our two people that really put this report together. So our Director of Assessment, who is Ms. Angela Miller, so thank her for coming, and the Dean of Academic Support and Assessment, Ms. Cecilia Brewer. So they've joined us. If there are any questions, they are the experts to answer those questions. I would just give you a few, kind of a brief summary of this assessment report. There's a lot of work, not only in the report, but it shows a lot of work among the faculty. This is the first time that we actually had a summary of assessment. So we compiled information from fall of 2019, which is the first time we started doing this assessment report, through the spring of '24. So the reports, we were working on building a baseline, which now we really have a good baseline. So that first year, we put together our first report, and then we've been doing them since. And so now we have an opportunity to really start looking back and work on continuous improvement, which is the whole purpose of us doing assessment. So this report looked at the program learning outcomes, department level or discipline learning outcomes, our student learning outcomes from each program versus those that we recorded on an assessment plan. So we do have that baseline of information, and some of those percentages and totals are recorded on pages 12 and 13 of the report. Program level assessment percentages were comparable to what we've done in previous years for the assessment plans and action plans. But we did note a spike in incomplete or not submitted status reports and a slight increase in some of our missing assessment finding reports. I've discovered where that problem, most of that problem lay, and it, I don't think it'll happen again. So we've worked on that. We figured out kind of where that was, and we're working to fix it. Program level assessment completion rates are recorded on pages 14 through 25. And this is interesting, I think, for you to know that each two-year assessment cycle contains four submissions. We have the assessment plan, which is in the first fall, assessment findings in the spring, action plan based on those findings in the second fall, and then the status report in the second spring. So, you know, they're doing the study, they're getting the results, they're making a plan on the results, and then they're trying to see if those, that plan did anything, essentially is what's going on there. We completed a pilot for course level assessment. We've had a really robust process for assessment for individual sections. And so one of the things that was highlighted in our most recent HLC report and what we are reporting on at the end of the year are, one of the things are our course level assessments. So for example, think of Comp 1. You know, we might have 30 sections of Comp 1 that are all of our modalities. So there are post-secondary students, there are high school students, there are blended classes, there are hybrid high flex, there are face-to-face, and there are online. So we're studying all of those to make sure that there's no discrepancy in how they meet the learning outcomes. And so we did a pilot with two. We had Comp 1 and algebra. So those are among our two highest enrolled courses. We're extending that. And over a period, we will get through the top 10 most enrolled courses, which will actually cover probably, I mean, close to 100% of our Gen Ed students. And some of those will cover a lot of our workforce programs as well. So we'll continue that pilot. Class level assessment, this really highlights the work of individual instructors and the reflection on student learning. On pages 28 through 31, there's a summary of those submissions with actual examples that the instructors have provided. And one of the things we noticed were that the improvements on timing and redesigning of assignments, and there was increased focus on comparison among terms or between terms. So it's always a work in progress, and we feel that we really are getting better at it. And so with that, I'll take any questions that you may have over this assessment report.
It's a good report. I would like to make a comment. I think I, for one, have appreciated the little periodic newsletter, you know, blurbs you put out. That's really, really helpful. I mean, one of our many duties as trustees that we don't get paid for is to track a lot of stuff. And so that's really helpful in helping us track that stuff, some of that stuff that we're supposed to be tracking and monitoring and so on and so forth. It's really helpful. Thank you. I know it's probably a lot of work, but it's really helpful. Thank you.
I forward that to the board each time it comes out. So you do a great job on it.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Absolutely. I always have one. For your team that you brought, I saw you brought your backup. Team, is there anything that really stood out for you on these reports that were like a surprise to you? Like, I didn't expect that, and it was a good thing.
Yeah, so we also, for this report, we also included accolades at the bank. So there are actually three programs that were highlighted that were kind of like our surprise surprises. Kind of like, oh, this is something that was going on, that we now have all the proof that they're doing some good things.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Yes, and I know all of this really came about because of the way we were lacking with the Higher Learning Commission. So I'm very pleased to see that we are in the assessment mode, and we're going to stay in the assessment mode so that we can stay accredited.
Yes, out of HLC jail. Out of HLC jail is what I call it.
Yes.
Well, great continued progress. Thank you.
And did you mention, so we're going to get ready to ramp up again because we have our upcoming visit.
That's actually in my board report.
It's in your board report, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I will zip it.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Pope? All right. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'd invite the presentation of the 2024 Annual Security and Fire Safety Report presented by Mr. Severs, Deputy Chief of College Police. Good morning.
Good morning, trustees. Good morning, Dr. Moser. Thank you for this opportunity to share the Annual Security and Fire Safety Report. This report is required under the CLEARY Act for all educational institutions of higher ed to be published annually by October first of every year. The CLEARY Act is a consumer protection law. It is meant to help keep students, both future and current, as well as employees informed about crimes on campus. And I'm happy to share with you that our crime statistics are excellent on campus. They are very low compared to other parts of the city and even just outside of our borders. This is due to our diligent patrol and focus on high visibility on campus. This high visibility is a great deterrent for criminals. And with that, I would welcome any questions.
I have one. Jason, I think another part of that, in addition to the increased visibility and so forth, is education, I mean, educating our constituents what they can do. You know, first, to ensure their safety, not put themselves in, in the crime triangle, as we call it, to where they might be selected as a victim. You talk a little bit about some of our prevention programs that you all.
Absolutely.
Put on.
Absolutely. So we do have general safety classes that we offer every semester on all of the campuses. So we send officers out or supervisors to offer those classes to our students. They're advertised on the webpage, and we also send out emails recommending that students come. We also have some faculty members that actually choose to bring their entire classes and host a class period going over either the CRAZE, the Active Shooter Response Training, or the general safety training that we offer. We also welcome anyone in the college community to request trainings for classrooms, anything specific. Occasionally, we even go down to the childcare center and offer, you know, Halloween safety and different trainings down there as well. So we're always prepared to do that, and we welcome that from the college community. We're happy to help.
Jason, is there anything specific that we're doing with us having student housing now? Are we providing anything specific just for the student housing?
So we participate in their RA training at the beginning of the semesters, working with Nicole and Cole to make sure that they're up to speed on what they need to do. We also work with them on fire drills. This month, they're having a special Centennial Hall Halloween celebration where they're going to invite the whole college community to come in and work through the halls. The police department is going to have a table set up there. We're going to be interacting with the students, handing out literature and sharing information. So anything that we can do, Nicole's been great to work with. So anything that we can do to help with Centennial Hall as well, we try and do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, it's really great to see all those zeros.
Absolutely.
Yes, it is. Spreadsheets. We can be proud of that, especially when you consider the campus sits kind of in the middle of an area where there's a lot of other police activity around it.
Absolutely.
And so that's, that's really good job.
Thank you.
I really liked it as one part of the report, and hopefully this is being posted maybe around campus, too, but the safety tip sheet, kind of a top seven of what our students, faculty, staff, all alike, can do to really keep those statistics down and not become a statistic themselves. So it's a really nice concise list, so appreciate that.
We have Chris Green's area to thank for the design of that and how wonderful that looks. We have pulled that out of the book as well, and we print that and use that on the tables for handouts and all the events that we have, so it is used regularly.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to communications. First up, I would invite Dr. Moser to present the Board of Trustees' Annual Food Drive.
Very good. Thank you. You know, this is probably the fifth year, maybe sixth year, that we have done the Board of Trustees' Food Drive, and it's really to help bring food to our student community as we approach the holidays. And, you know, with Thanksgiving and all of that coming up, we've had wonderful participation from board members, from the college at large administration, and many of our partners as well, providing food for our students. We do have a student population that is very sensitive to food insecurity. And we just want to make sure that they all have something good to eat so they can be healthy and do well in their studies and just be healthy and, you know, not healthy versus hungry, I guess. So this is the announcement. We'll start promoting it. And at our next meeting in November, we will share with the community the collection of food that we have, have raised or brought in together. And for our newer trustees, we always have it. And we'll fill the entire front of these tables with food for our students. So I encourage everyone to participate. There is the flyer that you'll see around campus on what some of the items are that they're specifically looking for, for the food kitchen or pantry that we have. So if you could look at that or any other items that won't go bad quickly, right? Or, and definitely the not expired foods, et cetera. So it's been really successful and appreciated by our students, and we look forward to everyone's participation.
Awesome. One of my favorite events every year. Truly is difficult to concentrate on academic or career achievement when you're not sure if you're going to get to eat that day. So I'm excited we will get to participate and make an impact there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, if I could add one comment, only because I got to facilitate some of the conversations during COVID and during the Kansas Beats the Virus Project with Kansas Leadership Center hosting that, our food pantry was able to purchase refrigeration. And that made a huge difference for our students on campus, you know? Because, of course, I'm looking at it, this is all the dry stuff. It's like, but we do have refrigerators.
Yeah, true.
We have refrigerators, so you can't have cereal without, come on. So we do have that opportunity to support them, and I'm extremely passionate about this. I'm super excited this year. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Next, I'd invite Dr. Moser again to introduce Dr. Robert Walker, our new Chief Information Officer. Good morning.
Yeah, very good. Please, come on up to the stand. So it is really, truly my pleasure to introduce to you and everyone our new Chief Information Officer, Mr. Robert Walker. He brings so much experience and varied experience, from institutional experience to corporate experience, having his last position working directly for Alucion, which is our college system, S, not SIS. Yes, SIS, Student Information System, yeah. So that experience will be really helpful as we continue to work with Alucion and move into the cloud. He's already started off great. His experience, of course, as I mentioned with Alucion, but also the VP of Technology at Arizona Western College and CIO at Grantham University and Concord Career College. So brings a great breadth and depth of experience. So want to welcome you. I think this would be your fourth day on the job. Started on Wednesday, fifth, fifth day on the job. Already started off doing great. And I don't want to go without thanking Peter Gabriel, too, for his six years of service as CIO and really building that area and making sure especially our networks are safe and all of that. But Bob, would you like to share a few words with us?
If you don't mind, thank you for the warm welcome, trustees. Good morning. And to my colleagues and the community as well. Good morning to you all. I'm very happy to be here, back in home in Kansas City where we live. My wife and our children all live here, and very happy to be a Blue Devil. We will be continuing the significant change and growth that we've been seeing. And these will be a busy couple of years. So I look forward to helping to lead the college during that time. I have found a very competent leadership team here, and I'm pleased with that. And it'll all be managed with a great deal of communication. Change will be managed carefully, and you'll be well aware of what we're doing and proud of what we accomplish in the next few years. So happy to be here. And I did want to note also to our gentleman from LinkedIn that I applied for this position one night. The next morning, Victoria contacted me through LinkedIn. And if I had waited a day, I'd bump your stats by thirty-three percent. I would be your number four. So thank you all. And any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, very good.
Well, welcome aboard. We look forward to seeing what your, what your impact will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
You're welcome.
That brings us to the Board Committee Reports, beginning with the Board Finance Committee, Vice Chair Chris Well.
Thank you, Chair Snart. The Kansas City Kansas Community College Board Finance Committee met on Tuesday, October eighth. And I'll just point out a couple of highlights. Of course, I always start with the college continues to manage its financial resources well because it's true, so I kind of like saying it. Also, during the meeting, we had several different discussions. We had discussion about the 2025 health benefit insurance, both medical and dental, presented by Ms. Mixon Page. We also, of course, went through all of the financials as usual. And I've got something else to say about that in just a bit. But also had a presentation by Mr. Pope regarding the CTE fees. Discussion in addition to that about the downtown location update. Well, the downtown location update was given, I should say. And finally, the gymnasium floor, there was an update that was given on that. And I don't want to steal anybody's thunder because a lot of it is contained in some of the other reports. But the thing I wanted to swing back to real quickly is that, you know, I was thinking about this, and I, you know, we obviously know that KC KCC is an excellent institution. And you can say that all day long, but then when you say it with fact and examples, then it really rings true. And one of the things that I wanted to point out, I know that last time I pointed out how our financial reporting is, I think it's unparalleled when you look at community colleges and not only in the region, but maybe in the country. And that's a great thing. The second thing that I wanted to point out with that and couple that with is that if you look at the way, and I'm not trying to say that other community colleges aren't getting the job done. It's not my business. I'm not their elected official. I know KC KCC finances. But when I did some comparative analysis, I looked at, okay, some of these community colleges have revenue in, excuse me, revenue in, then they manage their expenses, they pay their bills, and that's pretty much it. And then they manage controversy, you know, when it comes up, for whatever reason. So that's great. That's how they manage their finances. But when I looked at how KC KCC manages its finances, it's a whole different world. It is evolved and refined, it's an evolved and refined financial management practice. For example, you know, we, of course, we do our predictive modeling so we know what's coming at what time of year or what year. We, in addition to that, we manage our revenue and expenses and such. And one thing I wanted to point out, and the reason I'm bringing this up because it's important for taxpayers to have an understanding of this, is that in addition to managing the in and the outflow of, you know, revenue and expenses, we also invest. Not only because it's a smart thing to do, but because what happens is, is when we have returns on those investments, it means that KC KCC has an opportunity to ask for less from the taxpayers. That's why it's important. So if nothing else, I just wanted to, you know, bring this up. And if anyone asks us about our finances and you say, you know, we are excellent financial managers, that's an example of why and how. It is an evolved and refined financial management practice. So with that, I'll take any questions. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Vice Chair Chris Well? All right. Excellent report, as always. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Board Policy Committee, Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Yes, we had a meeting last week, and we reviewed some policies. And hopefully, we will be bringing them to you next month for approval.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the Board Committee Engagement Committee, Trustee Ricketts.
Well, good morning, everyone. I have my notes so that I don't ramble. But I would like to provide a quick little update on the Community Engagement Committee. We held our meeting last week on Thursday, October tenth. One of the key topics discussed was the intentional building of our committee. We are focusing on including diverse community members across Wyandotte County with plans to have at least one representative from Leavenworth County as well. Over the next few weeks, we will be reaching out to recommended individuals with the goal of having our full committee established and fully operational by January 2025. With that being said, we are going to be updating our vision and mission and purpose statements for our trustee board, Community Engagement Committee, which we will be sharing soon with our college president and board chair. As a committee, we remain mindful of our role to uplift and support the work of KC KCC's faculty and staff. And we're also confirming what our lane is so that we stay in our lane as a committee with the purpose of becoming strong advocates and voices throughout the community to highlight the dynamic work that is happening here at the college while also bringing forward community needs or challenges that could otherwise be overlooked. Sidebar from the notes, one of the things I shared with our college president over a year or so ago is that oftentimes when we're in the community, we're going to hear things that they're not going to hear. So it's important for us to share that. We're always going to hear something different than what staff is going to hear. But we are still waiting on a couple of things. And I know that the dynamic, Chris Green, is working on these. But we're looking at some shareable documents that will help us as a board also become a little bit more united front in ensuring that we have the appropriate data to share with the community. Thinking of like what trustee Chris Will just shared, facts and data. How do we have facts and data so that we're not sharing personal opinions versus facts and data? I like facts and data. But this is especially important when we, as community members and trustee board members, are asked to share updates on the college. And, you know, sometimes that just happens in general conversations, not so much as, you know, a speaking event. But we also want to, I know Chris has shared some recent community surveys, so we'll be taking a look at those to see what our role is in supporting the work of the college there. And just a quick little update to the trustee board members that part of our responsibility includes representing the college to the community and vice versa, as well as advocating on behalf of our college. And our committee will continue to focus on these responsibilities moving forward. That is my report.
I'd just like to add to that, if I could. Trustees have been really busy attending a number of various public, you know, events, organizational events and so on and so forth, not only trustees but staff. For example, a few weeks ago, trustee Hoskin Sutton, trustee Scruggs Andreu, and I, along with Dr. Schulte and Dr. Tiffany Bone, we participated in the Blind All-Stars 5K Run, which is a fundraiser for the Kansas School for the Blind down at Eleventh, Twelfth, and State Avenue. And so we were a sponsor. The college was a. And so we were a sponsor, the college was a sponsor of the event. And so we go to legislative forum, we attend various other, you know, community events that are going on. I was at an event for the PAL the other night. Livable Neighborhoods, I attended Livable Neighborhoods. And so our trustees are getting out there at these various other events. Some of which the college is a sponsor for and some not. So we are happy to do that as part of our duties and responsibilities. And we usually go to the things that sort of funnel into our passions as well. And so any other trustees that care to join us, you're welcome. And any other administration, you know, or staff that would care to join us. I know you go to a number of these events also because I see you there. We're happy, we're happy to include you. And then the survey that Chris shared with us, we did in twenty twenty-three. We're getting ready to put it out again, Chris. Is that right? Twenty twenty-four campus-wide. Who is involved in service clubs? Who's involved in some other organization or whatever? Volunteering their time, talent and treasure, you know, in the community somehow making contacts, being, again, being that visible person from KC KCC, always wearing your Blue Devil swag and things when you go so that people know who you are. There's a ton of that that goes on here. And so we're anxious to see the twenty twenty-four report to see where, where we're at with that. But we're literally giving, you know, thousands of hours across campus and the various people, thousands of hours. And some organization has put a dollar amount on that. Thirty-one dollars and some change an hour. And so that racks up pretty quickly in terms of the value, if you will, to the community or to these organizations. And so I just want to say thank you to the entire campus community for anybody and everybody that's in, involved in that. That is community engagement and that is where we need to be since community is a part of our name. And so we appreciate you so much.
So I'm going to add something onto that. One, one of the things I, I want to make sure that, that we catch is that it's not just a showing up to the, Miss Doug. Where's Marcia? We had a fabulous time at the Bootleggers Ball the other day. But it's also making sure that we are sharing what the college is doing. That we have the same message, that we are a united front and that we are sharing. I think of the report that you all just put together, oh my goodness, think of the nuggets that we can actually share with the community versus just us popping up to events. I, I love the Bootleggers Ball, had a good time. But making sure that we also have the voices of our community members that we're able to come back and share with the board and with our college president. That ends the report.
Excellent report.
Thank you. I have one event coming up to add to that, community relations related. So this Saturday, the nineteenth of October, nine AM at the KC KCC Performing Arts Center, we will be holding, hosted by the mayor, a public official town hall that I'll be representing KC KCC at along with at-large commissioners, looks like our DA, representatives from BPU, and then presidents of the Wyandotte County School Boards. So encourage anyone interested to come out and hear from your local elected officials. With that, do we have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have the ACCT and KACC delegate report and trustee Ash.
Yeah, real quickly, as far as KACC goes, obviously we're very busy working with the Board of Regents and others in preparation for the new legislative session to take place in January. And you know, there's always something that we need to bird dog whenever the Board of Regents is meeting and figuring out how they coordinate us, right? And so forth. So it's been busy. There's a lot of that that's been going on. We got a bit of great news regarding that this past week. Dr. Moser passed on that our very own Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, Kathy Wolfmore was appointed by Governor Kelly to the Kansas Board of Regents. She's a former state legislator and she's, works professionally or she has at University of Kansas Health System. She's retired, but she volunteers over there about twenty hours a week still. And she, in her previous legislator role, was, you know, a key person for not only college but for Wyandotte County. Being able to work across the aisle, form alliances and coalitions to help get things done that benefit people here. And so Kathy is, most of you know her, many of you know her, she's a, she's just a great person and very approachable, very intelligent, very collegial. And we're looking forward to being able to work with her and have a friendly, if you will, on the Board of Regents for community colleges. We also have former president of Fort Scott, Alyssa Johnson on there. And so, you know, we're, we're getting a couple of them now to kind of help look out for us. So next meeting for them is first weekend in December. And I think we're going to Parsons. I think we're going to Labette County Community College. So and then some of us are getting ready next week to go to ACCT Annual Congress Meeting in Seattle. I'll be traveling on the twenty first because my committee meets, the Governance and Bylaws Committee meets on Tuesday morning at ten o'clock next week there in Seattle. And then trustee Hoskin Sutton, your committee meets that same day, but in the afternoon. Is that correct?
Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. They meet at five, no, three that day.
Three, three o'clock.
Five.
So anyway, we're going to be busy there, you know, workshopping and attending. That's where, you know, for example, we hear about things like LinkedIn and Illution and those, you know, different things and what's working and what's going on and so on and so forth. So we're looking forward to that. Some that are going, it'll be their first trip there. I think Chair Isnard is scheduled to go to the pre-academy Chairs Academy, the pre-congress Chairs Academy. And Linda, do you have something you want to report from your committee, DEI committee?
Well, I know last time you mentioned you hadn't gotten your information, but we, you know, got information already and we're set to go. And I know last minute that we're going to approve today said I did not have information to add to the report. And I thought that was an odd statement to be in there because you use a report and if I have something to say, I will. And I didn't have anything to say last month, but talking about the pre-academies, I'm, I didn't sign up for one of the pre-academies which cost money. But I did sign up for a free one that's at the same time as the pre-academies. And it's entitled Innovative Solutions for Student Support and Offset, Offsetting College Expenses. So I'm looking forward to that because even talking back to the food drive, we have students with a lot of different needs. So if there's something that I can report back that we can do to help our students. So I'm looking forward to that.
Okay. So yes, every year we hear about food insecurity, we hear about housing insecurity for students. And it's nationwide. It's not just here in Kansas City or it's not just in the Midwest. In fact, it's worse in some places in the country. It's a real, real, a really serious challenge for them in helping students be successful. So we do appreciate the food drive and we do appreciate all that we do. And we, we did help eliminate some of the housing insecurity problem here. And we, you know, who knows, we may have the opportunity to, to do more with that. But we'll, we'll, we'll just see what the future brings. But we've been full, fully occupied since we opened it with a large waiting list every, every semester, every year. So, but we hear some of those same topics and some of those same things. And, and there's some innovative and creative things that we may, you know, pick up on. And we're happy to, like Linda said, we're happy to bring them back, you know, and share.
And that pre-session that I'm attending that's at the same time as the academies is from one to four. On that same day, Brad will be attending the others. I'll be in the session for innovative solutions.
So we hope to have more to report next month. That's, that's my report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for trustee Ash? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda this morning. Invite any questions or call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we'll have the Student Senate Report with Mr. Sanchez, Student Senate President. I believe he is on virtual.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Good morning.
Morning. So Student Senate was work, last week Student Senate was working with vote of registration tabling at the college here. We got over fifty signups for registration. And we are planning a fall festival next week on October twenty-fifth in Lower Joe from six to eight PM. And yesterday we did a, do, don't not worry for students to get donuts and sign up for Blue Connect. And that's all we have to report for right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanchez? Hearing none. A call for a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to the President's Report with Dr. Moser.
Very good. Thank you. Just to highlight on some of the things that our Student Senate President mentioned. His report was short today, but they are doing a lot of great work. So our Student Senate President Sanchez is doing a great job leading the, the Senate and wonderful ideas to enhance engagement with students among the college. So we appreciate all of your work. So, okay, very good. For my President's Report, you know, we have a lot of great things that are going on as you can see from our presentations today and also from the board document. And really pleased to be here at the Pioneer Career Center. Being able to again, visit the center and the great work that Marcia and her staff are doing. So thank you very much. Again, welcome Bob. You know, we're so glad to have you here and, and thank you to Peter who may be online. A couple items, yesterday we had a very good visit with Senator Marshall talking about the college and what we're doing at large and with the downtown project. And Vice President Pope may have some more details on that, on the things that they visited while he was on campus. Sunday I had the opportunity to spend probably about four hours. Rita Blitt had an opening exhibition at the Mulvane Blitt Gallery at, in Topeka. And it was focused on women of abstract, impressionalism. And, and really a great turnout and a lot of wonderful things going on with Rita in, in her world and the art and the, what that's bringing our communities. So we'll probably have some more discussion on that next month. We have award winners with us today and I won't go into detail, but with Chris Green as our VP for Marketing and Institutional Image. We have six national awards that we have won, so very excited about that. Last week I was able to participate in a panel discussion in Wichita with the Department of Commerce and Wichita, Wichita Business and Kansas Manufacturing at the Kansas Manufacturing Summit hosted by the case, I'm sorry, Kansas Chamber of Commerce, getting a little muddled here. But there's a lot of groups that were putting on this Kansas apprenticeship and manufacturing summit. So had a really good panel discussion there, had lots of people come up and ask questions about specifically what we're doing. And we talked about our role in expanding apprenticeship, the partnership that we're doing with Panasonic to bring two hundred people through that specialized curriculum that we're partnering with, with AACC and others. So there's a lot of great interest there. Coming up before our next meeting, we do have the NICE Awards, National Institute of Construction Education. We are the keynote address for the annual dinner this year. So very proud, proud to do that. That's Tuesday, November twelfth, and I know a lot of people have already signed up. Board members, if you haven't, please just let Cheryl know. We have twenty seats available as the presenter. And we'll be sharing our story about the downtown project. And PGAV is putting together some additional visual elements for that presentation. And then on that Thursday, we have our President's Leadership Council meeting. That's a breakfast on Thursday, November fourteenth. Couple of non-KCKCC events that we're heavily involved with. The Hispanic Development Fund is having their annual dinner and banquet on Wednesday night that week. And then High Aspirations has their mentor challenge on that Friday. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we've got some great events going on. Lots of upcoming events and I'll segue to also coming up, we have flu season. So that's something to look forward to and remind everyone to get your flu shots. With that, we are updating our COVID policies and procedures. They're almost done. Lorraine is working on that. So just to know that we are on it as we approach, you know, possible COVID activities. We are in the final stages with an agreed upon sales contract with the USD four fifty-three at Leavenworth for the Pioneer Career Center. So we should be the proud owners of the center in a couple of weeks. And that will be great and allow us to continue to offer the courses and programs that we do here as we develop and then get our new facility built off of K seven. So proud about that. Couple just really exciting things. HUD, we were able to successfully transfer the HUD money from brick and mortar to FFNE. So that saves the college two point nine two million dollars. Appreciate the help by Merchant McIntyre with that. And then the, probably the, to me, the most exciting thing is a lot of push and shove and nudging and encouraging and phone calls and text messages last minute. But Friday afternoon, we did get our grading permit for the downtown project. So they, we have all the demolition done. We have all the reshoring of State Avenue done. We got this, the grading permit. So we have about three, three and a half weeks of site grading work to do. And by that time then we should also have our, our building permit one and two. We're just finalizing some items with the, the fire marshal on permit one. So I expect that to be complete within about the next ten days. So we are out of demolition and we are into construction. So that's exciting and got everyone moving on that. So with that, I'll end my report.
Thank you. Lots of good news. Any questions for Dr. Moser? Hearing none. Call for a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now for the Executive Vice President's Report with Dr. Baylog. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present a monthly update centered on our institutional strategy partnerships and operations. Rather than present the report in its entirety, I've identified a few highlights. As was mentioned earlier, we completed the search for the college's new chief information officer. And we're excited about welcoming Bob Walker to our team here at KC KCC. As you, as you will recall in a prior meeting, I mentioned to you that over these four months, these past four months, we would make a series of tone-setting hires. these past four months, we would make a series of tone-setting hires. We would bring on bar raisers. And I'm proud, I'm excited to say that we have indeed done that. Uh, when you look at who we have brought onto the team, combined seventy-five years, over seventy-five years of executive level experience in their respective areas, when you look at, uh, what Lorraine brings to our team as our new chief human resources officer, when you look at what Patrick brings as our new vice president of finance and operations, when you look at what Bob is bringing as our new C I O, uh, we're also grateful for Dr. Tom Cordyne joining us as long-term interim vice president for student affairs and enrollment management. They're raising the bar. They're setting the tone, and I'm excited for where this will lead us and the support that they bring our college. I've mentioned this to you previously, so we've reviewed, uh, with support from institutional effectiveness, six strategic planning platform solutions, and we've identified one that we would like to move forward with. Um, so you can anticipate learning more about this at your next finance committee meeting and board meeting. Over the next few months, as we install a new platform and load it with content, you'll note a change in the way that we report to the board, focusing more on strategy and impact. And our monthly reports will culminate in biannual and annual reports to the board and to the college community. As it relates to partnerships, I was joined by Dr. Ed Kramer, dean of math, science, business, and technology recently, uh, with K C Biohub. We hosted them at the K C K Chamber, uh, and, and hosted the Economic Development Administration that was touring the area. This was building off of the regional tech hubs proposal that was submitted. Uh, K C K C C was the only community college in the metro invited to contribute to that tech hubs proposal. And so we had visitors with E D A from Washington, D C, Denver, Kansas City, uh, that were visiting. This was a trip that was, uh, coordinated, convened by K C Biohub. We were at the table, uh, to discuss our interest in growing our biomanufacturing training, and that would be in partnership with Donnelly College to create a two-plus-two pathway, uh, for students focused on biomanufacturing in this area. E D A is very interested in the work that we're doing, and, uh, we're, we're excited about where this conversation is headed. And so the K C Biohub for bringing them into the area, really sharing with them what we're doing, uh, to focus on biologics, biomanufacturing. Uh, and, and K C K C C is at the table, at the center of these conversations. Uh, finally, uh, well, let me mention one more thing on partnerships. Uh, yesterday, I attended an economic outlook event with the Leavenworth County Development Corporation. They hosted this with the Center for Economic Development and Business Research, um, through Wichita State University, really talking about the, the future of Leavenworth's economy. And, uh, we're anticipating additional growth in construction, specialized trades, uh, which is right in our sweet spot. Uh, so it was really interesting to learn more about the research that's going on through the center at Wichita State, uh, its potential impact on the area, and now starting to mobilize and align with economic development, workforce development efforts here in Leaven, in Leavenworth County. Finally, uh, we're coordinating the installation of forty X. So you'll recall that we welcomed our consultants from Franklin Covey here last month. Uh, they were on-site to, um, host and facilitate our first team lead implementation session. Uh, team leaders from across the college are now socializing the methodology with their teams and developing their team wildly important goals. These we refer to as WIGs and lead measures. We'll reconvene those team leaders at the end of the month for the second implementation session, and, uh, I just want to thank all of the team leaders, uh, for their engagement, their enthusiasm. We're even seeing, uh, competition emerging among teams, uh, that are really raising the bar, uh, and raising the performance levels across the college. And so that, that is exciting to see. Uh, I want to thank trustee Ricketts for her attendance at the Bootleggers Ball on Saturday in Leavenworth, benefiting the Lansing Educational Foundation. Also congratulate them on a splendid event. It was, uh, over a year in the making, and, uh, it was enjoyed by all in attendance. And I'd be remiss if I did not thank, uh, Marcia and her team for hosting us here at the Pioneer Center this morning, for Randy and his team for taking their show on the road. It is not easy, and it's often thankless. And so Randy, we appreciate your support, and Cheryl, uh, for her efforts to handle arrangements for this morning's meeting. I welcome any questions.
Good stuff.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Move approval of the report.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Baylog.
Thank you.
Next, we have the vice president of academic affairs report with Mr. Pope. Good morning again.
Good morning. Uh, so the highlights that I put in the academic affairs board report are a little bit different from what I've done before. What I did before is to try to highlight some things that the faculty were doing that I thought would be really interesting to showcase. What I did this month is kind of look at the large projects that we in academic affairs are doing. And so you'll see those, and I won't spend a lot of time on them, but statewide program alignment. So many of our career and technical education programs are aligned at the state level. The K BOR and the Technical Education Authority voted to check the alignment at each individual community and technical college. And if those programs are not in alignment, then we're not eligible for Perkins funding for those programs. And so the collection of that data started October first. There's a lot of backend stuff that goes into checking this from our part and from their part as well. By July first of every year, we will be required to assert, well, I think I have my date wrong, August first. I think the president will be required to assert that they are, they know whether a program is not in alignment, for example. And so one of the questions that came up at the K BOR meeting was, well, why wouldn't a college want a program to be in alignment? And so one of the most common answers is if a community business partner wanted a different program than what was aligned at the state, then the, the college may decide not to align that program at the state level. There was lots of discussion, and I think the presidents, as a group, may try to respond to this, but there was lots of discussions about, well, if our industry partners want us to do this certain thing, then why are you punishing us by not allowing us to have Perkins funding? So it's in flux right now, but that's how it stands currently. So we're going through. And I would say in the overwhelming majority of cases, you do want your programs to align. It's a good thing. The other thing that K BOR does is they don't do it in a timely manner. So construction technology is going through realignment for twenty twenty-five, and the last time it went through realignment or review was two thousand nine. So it begs the question of how we can keep our curriculum current and meeting the needs of our business and industry partners when we're waiting sixteen years for a realignment. So those are, that's one of the things that we're doing. Math pathways, I've kind of mentioned this, but the main thing is that college algebra is no longer the gateway course for all of our transfer courses. And so now there's three pathways, including college algebra, but adding contemporary math and elementary statistics. We're also going through a redesign of developmental education. K BOR is not going to allow us to offer standalone credit for developmental education after fall, beginning fall of twenty-six. So some of the options are supplemental course section, mandatory tutoring section, a boot camp section, or a compressed course section. Uh, the math group is really working hard on that. The English group just started. Uh, we do a co, co, uh, prerequisite developmental education. So if we don't want to change the model, we're good with English, but we are studying it to see if there's some better ways for us to go. Uh, H L C, we have our interim monitoring report due no later than December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And Dean Brewer and Director Miller gave me a draft of that report just a couple of weeks ago. I'm looking through it. It was a really strong draft. We're just kind of adding and clarifying some things. So my intent is that we'll have it, um, submitted to H L C no later than November, uh, no later than the beginning of Thanksgiving break or by Thanksgiving break. We are looking at course level outcome assessment strategy, a second complete cycle of assessment of courses, programs, general education learning outcomes, and institutional learning outcomes, and then clarification of the process for those. So I think we're in good shape for those. Dr. Moser mentioned we have an H L C visit. The date is sometime in November of twenty-six. We don't have the exact date. Uh, as soon as January comes around, I'm going to reconstitute our committee so we can start working on our assurance argument. It'll be due, I think, thirty days prior to when our, our visit is. Uh, it could be sixty, but I think it's thirty. We had to do it a lot earlier when we were on probation. Um, Dr. Moser mentioned the Senator, Senator Marshall visited, so it was a great visit. We looked at the biomanufacturing program and some of our health professions programs. Uh, Senator Marshall is an O B G Y N. So he quizzed some of our students, and he started writing on the whiteboard, which was really kind of fun. Um, a couple of other things, very quickly, the Harvester's Distribution took place at the Technical Education Center on the twenty-seventh of September. Um, we had partnerships with United Way, Voter Network, K C Chiefs, K C Royals, Sporting K C, K C Current. Thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars was donated to Harvester's to provide additional non-perishables to multiple distribution sites this month. Twenty thousand pounds of food, five hundred and four adults, two hundred and twenty-seven seniors, and five hundred and sixty-three children. And one last bullet point, um, the respiratory program had a one hundred, uh, sorry, paramedic program, sorry about that. Paramedic program had a one hundred percent pass rate on the National Registry Paramedic Certification Exam for their May twenty-four graduates. So congratulations to Director Smith and the faculty and the students. They have a hundred percent job placement rate, so kudos. And the summer E M T students had a one hundred pass rate on their certification exam. Okay, sorry. Lots going on. I'll take any questions.
How, you mentioned the developmental and how that's made, it's going to be realigned. How is that going to impact our students? Because we know many come to us not prepared. And are we doing anything on the backend, working with the, not the high schools, to say, hey, this is what students are lacking when they get to college? Cause that would be another way to make sure they're ready when they get here.
And that's the, I, I'm not being flip at all, but that's a sixty-four thousand dollar question that we really are trying to work through here institutionally, as well as at the state level. So we don't know yet, but we really are conscious of those students, especially in our demographic.
Yes.
And we're trying to share at those levels some, what we believe are some unintended consequences potentially. But we do have all of those levels of not only prerequisite support, but maybe some mandatory training. Uh, for our Title III grant, we were able to use what's called Alex, which is a placement testing. But it also, uh, as I understand from Dr. Kramer, will allow students to dig into deep, or dig into exactly where their weaknesses may be, and that they can have some modules around those. So it's a very quick way for students who are close to be able to get the support that they need without taking a course. So we're looking at all of those, you know, all of those things.
And, and I feel obligated to add that many states have been doing this for years, you know, ten, fifteen years or so. But the data now is showing in those students at risk, um, they're not successful in what K BOR is trying to push down our throats, basically. And to not allow us to have a separate developmental course, um, you know, that it, the data shows nationally that that does not work for a majority of at-risk students. So the presidents are having that conversation and trying to move something forward on that, um, because our students need options, and for K BOR to limit our options for students to be successful, it, you know, it, it is just not right. So we'll be having some more conversation with K BOR on that.
And I'll just make one statement about that. Um, we, we can offer the courses. So I, I was a little bit incorrect with not allowed. But what they've said is the consequence is that you will not be in alignment with your performance agreement. And so you won't be eligible for any new funding. And so, you know, it, it's, um, yeah, it, it's just an interesting thing. But yes, to your point, the data is showing that we're not only late, but now we're doing something that everybody else tried, and we found out it didn't really work that way.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that clarification. But then with that, basically, they're saying, yeah, you can't do it unless you don't want to have any funding.
Exactly.
So, yeah, it's, it's a stick. There's no carrot there, folks.
Well, maybe with two new people on K BOR, uh, that, uh, can help us in that. We can talk to maybe Kathy Wolfmore and the person from the other college, because, um, they would know the importance of that, that we don't leave students behind.
Right.
And then the other one is a comment, and I'm going to probably have to read it here, from the institute. Uh, it's from Tom Brady. The name has changed, but the Academic Symposium on the twelfth. And I noticed that they're looking at, they mentioned internationalization, the Fulbright, uh, program. And I just wanted to point out that we did have the Fulbright program here at the college years ago with, uh, Dr. Henry Lewis, dean of social and behavioral sciences. We did, used to have a Fulbright scholar, so that would be great if it came back because it did help students, faculty, and staff to have that international perspective. So just so you know, it's not something completely new. We've had a Fulbright scholar. And I tell you, some of the people in social sciences would know more about how all of that worked, because I know Dr. Valdina Nguyen with Dr. Lewis was very involved in that. And some other social science faculty has, has since retired.
Okay, thank you for that context. Thank you.
I'm having a, a moment, trying to make sure that I heard correctly, that if we have an additional program, now take away something, that K BOR will say that we're out of alignment, and we could risk our Perkins funding.
So, yes, for the program alignment, if we are not in alignment, and that means in every way. So there's about four or five different things that they look at, including our website and the marketing materials. Uh, if any of those are out of alignment, um, we're, we're considered out of alignment. And the consequence is that that program, not the whole school, but that program is not eligible for Perkins funding.
A E T is a great, a great example of that, our Automation Engineering Technology Program. The state's advanced manufacturing or manufacturing program is ten or fifteen years old. So there's no way that we want to align to that. And we also have companies like, you know, uh, Panasonic and Honeywell and, uh, Hudamataki. Uh, that's almost said right. Uh, but multiple manufacturers in our area that need skill sets of today, not skill sets from nineteen years ago. So for K BOR to say that you can offer the A E T, and we have a new A E T certificate that is developed by business and industry and supported by A A C C, and them to say that we're not going to give you Perkins funding for that. If we did not, have not been hustling so hard to get federal appropriations and congressional funding for these programs, um, and we need to update the lab at a couple million dollars. And we're meeting the business and industry's needs of today and tomorrow. Not being able to utilize Perkins funding to purchase that equipment, to update those labs. I'm sorry, that goes way beyond coordination, which is K BOR's primary responsibility. They're not coordinating, they're, they're mandating, and they're holding funding back for those that don't follow their process, which is fifteen years old.
And that's what I meant earlier when I said, it's a continual struggle between the community college system and somewhat the tech colleges. While they figure out how to coordinate us. And so like Dr. Moser just said, they don't control it. They are the board for the universities. They have to be bean counters to an extent. But they ought to be about helping the colleges be successful developing the workforce in Kansas. And those that want to go on into research university work and all of that kind of work as well, that's important, and we need to have that. But we, they're getting out of coordinating, in my opinion. And in the years that I've been doing this and monitoring whatever, and they're meddling. You know, they're meddling now into our responsibility as a local control, as a local board. And so K A C C is in the fight all the way. Heather Morgan is battling and fighting, you know, all the time, and the presidents, um, are in the fight all the way. And so as trustees, when we have opportunity to engage with those legislators, and they need to know what's going on. You know, the governor needs to know what's going on too. And I agree, Linda, hopefully with Kathy Wolfmore coming on there and with Alyssa Johnson there, they're going to be able to help. they're going to be able to help them understand you can't mess with the beans, so to speak, all right? If we're going to build workforce, if we're going to have economic development in this state, there has to be a workforce for it. And that's our, that's our bailiwick and, you know, the tech colleges somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
They want to throw it more onto the local tax. I mean, it's essentially what they do, they want to throw it more onto the local taxpayers and/or the students. They want to raise it up. And in a, a college like ours, in an urban setting like we are, and, you know, we talked about food insecurity and housing insecurity and, you know, poverty and so on. So we're trying to help people up out of that. And, and so, you know, they, somebody needs to tell them what the Perkins funding actually is, what it's for, you know, they need to go back to the fundamentals, I think, and quit meddling.
Yeah, and they shouldn't be forcing community colleges very heavy-handedly to teach a curriculum that's fifteen years out of date. That's just nonsense.
Well, that's one of the things that we say so often is, the great thing about the community college model is that we're more nimble, we're able to innovate and change faster. And it's unfortunate to be kind of held back by parts of the system that don't move quite as quickly as we do. So it's a constant battle between that, that innovation versus compliance. Hopefully change for the positive coming.
I move approval of his report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Pope. Next we have the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management Report. And I'm told Dr. Cordy is off campus this morning, so Dr. Moser will present the report.
Yes, thank you Chair Estard. Yeah, Dr. Cordy is not feeling well today, so he did plan to be here, but is not. The report is in your packet that you've had. As I look through it, just to identify some of the items that really stand out and it's included on his summary page and the document's not, it's on page one fifty-seven, it looks like. So we have the new student engagement platform called Blue Connect, which Student Senate is also helping to push to get people involved and get to be signed up for Blue Connect, which has a lot of information on it about upcoming activities and events. And it's a, it's a mechanism, it's an app that we can connect with our students so that they can stay really up to date in almost real time. So that's a great addition. The Student Athlete Leadership Team, or SALT, has been put together for this FY twenty twenty-five year. And they will be working to help shape the landscape of intercollegiate athletics here at KC KCC, which is great to have them involved with that. And our Counseling and Advocacy Center hosted the Women's Equality Day, celebrating Kansas City's Black Suffragists, presented by Dr. Camalita Williams of the Black Archives of Mid-America. And then also Student Affairs and Engagement had the, hosted and supported the Student Senate for the Welcome Back Bash, which was a lot of fun. We had great participation in that and a really good job by everyone with all the booths that were set up, the club brush to get more students involved and Student Senate and the paint throwdown. And over six hundred students attended these events. So really great work provided by Student Affairs and working closely with our student population. Just a quick item on enrollment, it's good to see that we are still up in enrollment. We've slipped a little bit, but that's common. As people, students may opt out of some classes, maybe that they're not doing well in. But we do have efforts to try and continue to help those students. So we're up about four and a half percent in headcount. And I think it was about three percent or so in credit hours. The other thing that we're doing and pushing real hard on is really emphasizing and promoting our special sessions, or like our eight-week sessions. So working with Chris Green and her office, we really had a big push to get second eight-week enrollment up. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we're up about a thousand credit hours for the second eight weeks. And it's an increase of approximately twenty percent from the twenty-day enrollment of last year. So we don't have a day-to-day comparison yet, but we're building that now with our new Director of IE and really pushing not just the full sixteen weeks, but also really pushing for those eight-week terms and those students that may have opted out of some of the sixteen-week classes, specifically targeting them to get back in the second eight weeks, you know, so that they can be successful and get the classes passed that they want to do to keep on their academic plan. So with that, the remaining information is in your report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you for filling in. And because you're filling in, some of the questions I had, I will forego.
Thank you.
But I will mention that from Nicole Housing, I do like the idea that she's going to be talking with different groups on campus, whether it's music or art, to look at summer camps as using housing in that way. Because I know a lot of institutions do that with their housing in the summertime. They rent the space, so to speak, to bring in revenue because of those empty beds during the summer. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, that's right. We specifically paused the first two years so everyone can get used to the center. But now we're pushing for that and adding as many groups and student activities and regional activities to host them here at the college. Because we have all those great fields and everything, plus a beautiful place for students to stay. So thank you for noticing that.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Moser? Hearing non-ed call for a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next we have the Vice President of Finance and Operations Report with Dr. Schulte, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this time. Just give a quick update in various areas that have been touched on with the Finance Committee meeting. As Trustee Chris Wells stated, kind of worked through the process to give some insight into our financial position. But I will encourage each of you that aren't on the Finance Committee to reference, not now, but when you have time available, the sheet that is green and orange. It really gives a financial forecast in relation to when we'll see revenues come in and expenses go out. I think it's a very helpful document in relation to getting an idea of when we'll see revenues because of the fact that we do, on the front end of fall, have a significant amount of revenue come in. We kind of spend that down as a declining balance throughout the course of the, you know, the six-month period. Then again, we see that again in spring and we decline that balance down into the end of spring as well. You'll note inside of there as well, for November and December, inside of that inflows, they're blank. And I raised that so that if you look at the financials now, a month ago, we saw a net asset increase of four point six million, this last month it was down four point two. Some of that's due to timing. And as we go through the year, you'll see that kind of ratchet its way down. But bringing it to your attention so that you're mindful of that, as we look at November, December financials, you'll see that the expenses relative to revenue may shift, but that's all in relation to timing. We collected it on the front end and we use that as a declining balance going forward. Another note, and you'll see it in a presentation later, appreciation for our CHRO, Mrs. Lorraine Mixon Page and working with me with the Benefits Committee to have a conversation around our health benefits. As noted, it will be presented to you on new items. But it was a good conversation with the Benefits Committee, bringing them together, having an open campus conversation about our benefit structure. And then the development of that over the next twelve-month period as well as we review, looking at what are our benefits on campus? And how do we take into consideration our health, dental and various benefits on campus collectively as well? It was noted, and I want to state it from the finance side, as we look at forty-X, one of the pieces that we're focused on for our goal is customer service, looking at exceptional customer service. What that really means too is breaking down some of the barriers for our students on campus. So conversations around food insecurity are those that we're having in the business office as well to say, what do we need to do differently, looking at food service, RFPs, vending RFPs, pouring rights agreements on campus? And finding ways in which we can utilize food service and provide food service in various ways or opportunities for those students who may be struggling with food insecurity on campus. New market tax credit conversations continue to happen. Dr. Moser shared where we are construction-wise. Every week I have probably three to four meetings on the new market tax credit. We're hoping to close, I think I shared last month, on October ninth, that didn't happen. But we continue to work towards moving to that closure date and getting everything in order. I feel very good about the position that we're in as we move in that direction. We didn't have a call this Monday due to the holiday, but we will resume that next Monday. And I think we're getting closer and closer to ratcheting down to that closure. That closure means then the new market tax credit transaction would take place and we'd have the funds available to continue based on that new market tax credit. Inside of Human Resources, talent acquisition continues. Ms. Mixon Page and her team continue to emphasize along with the assistance of LinkedIn and other resources, how do we attract people to come to KC KCC as employees? How do we make sure that we're an employer of choice and get out in front of individuals in various ways? In addition to that, research that's been done and ongoing that continues is Gallagher Study on campus, taking a look at our various positions on campus, getting an idea of the way that they're titled, what various positions we have on campus, doing job shadowing to get an idea more comprehensively of those positions that we have, those positions we need as we move forward. Inside of the area of facilities, the weight room is being finalized. If you get a chance in our on-campus in the next couple of weeks, stop by and try to grab someone to bring you through the weight facility. It's nice to see it being finalized and final pieces being put in there. The Facility Services and Remco are working on currently the Wash Barn Demo over at Tech. A tentative end of the month for that to be completed, that's been an ongoing process. We needed to clarify some things with BPU and utilities to make sure that moved forward. But that's now in process and should be done by the end of the month, fingers crossed. The gymnasium floor, and I shared with the Finance Committee, continues the process of mitigation. They got mitigated all the mercury, now they're putting in the floors. The timing behind that is probably mid-March when it'll be completed. So they'll put down the floor in the center, then they have to move the bleachers off into the center to put the flooring underneath where the bleachers go, reconnect the bleachers and then the continuation of that. So timing-wise, it's probably mid-March. We did let athletics know that ahead of time, so we made alternative plans for where sports teams will play. But it's one of those pieces where we continue to move in the right direction. It's just a timing piece on how quickly we can get it done. Inside of Information Technology, as President Moser noted, welcoming Bob Walker to the team. I will say, I'm excited to have Bob on my team as well. He came to his first cabinet meeting on Monday. And in that cabinet meeting, Bob talked a lot about process and procedure, which I absolutely love. In addition to that, Bob came in and when he met with me, gave me a plan, like a playbook, around how he will manage information technology on campus. Couldn't ask for anything more than knowing, here's the process, here's the procedure. Are we following that and how do we move in that direction? And then finally, I just wanted to note, under campus police, continue to work with them, looking at their infrastructure for staffing and their equipment. But also you'll receive an email if you haven't already. A Monday ago, I got a visitor about seven fifteen in my office, it was Chief Putzke. And he told me now is the time for him to submit his resignation for, or his retirement, not resignation. He's going to stay with us until January sixth, an email went out to campus yesterday letting him know. But it's the time for him and his wife to spend some time exploring the United States after forty years, various positions. And I'm happy to have him as a partner until the end of January and Jason as well as that partner as we move forward. And we'll continue to work on phase planning for that moving ahead. With that, I will entertain any questions on all of the various areas.
Well, great report as always, and we wish Chief Putzke the best in retirement. I know he's going to be with us for a little bit longer, but hate to see him go, but happy for him and his family. Are there any other questions for Dr. Schulte?
Now, I do have one quick question, only because benefits came up and for those of us who are still working, it's that season. Did we also take a look, I know, I'm assuming that that was for staff and faculty. Do we also take a look at our students' benefits?
As far as student insurance, we only run insurance on our students for our inside of athletics. I think we assist with insurance for if there's athletic-related injuries. But as far as student benefits, I'd have to defer to President Moser or Dr. Cordy on what options we have for student benefits.
I guess it's really what I'm, and did we take a look at that?
We, we offer for athletics and student clubs. We don't offer it at large, I do not believe, for the entire student body. Anyone participating in any college-related activity on campus or off campus is covered by our institutional insurance.
Patrick, one question, you mentioned the, the Benefits Committee, you know, the college. How many people comprise that, just for our general edification?
Yeah, I think the number is sixteen that are on that. And it's various individuals from all throughout campus, so various positions. So we have.
So everybody's represented.
It's really a broad representation of everyone and.
Staff.
Yeah, staff and, what was that?
Staff.
Yeah, staff, yep. Yes, faculty are separate, sorry. And a good group and we did.
Oh, no.
We did have faculty.
I'm sorry, okay. I stand corrected, I was thinking compensation.
Yeah, with Suzie, I think is there as a representative, yes. And we did, Ms. Mixon Page and myself, we did talk because we're new. We, you know, kind of brought, came into the Benefits Committee, but really want to lay out that plan for next year to say, how do we meet more often than just at the point of renewal on benefits? But actually have conversation throughout the year.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, could we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I wanted to give.
Motion carries.
I wanted to give Mr. Schulte time to sit down because I don't want him to think that this is directed directly at him. But I think I, I do have to bring attention to it because it seems like, and it's not about me, but, you know, Don, earlier you mentioned that we all attended that blind race. And it's in here and my name isn't mentioned at all. And in my age group, I, I was first in place. And it just seems like, for me that day when we were there, it just seems like a team event, you all, we were all there together. And then not to be included in this. And it's just, it's a pattern of microaggression, I'm being left out of a lot of things. And so I just want to bring it to your attention. When you talk about us going and being forefront, well, we've got to do a better job internally and not exclude. Because I, talking about inclusion, there's a lot of places I'm not being included now. And I just want to bring that to your attention. And in talking, it's part of a reason it started coming out as well is, in part of HR's report, there's a workshop on inclusion. And I attended a webinar that talked about inclusion. It, it was put on by ACCT and it talked about belonging and making people feel included. So if, as a trustee, I'm being excluded on things, and I mean, I can go into detail here because I know there'll be some pushback. But in this webinar, it talked about how it trickles down, it has to start at the top. And one of the things it mentioned was faculty can do is to make their students feel more apart is the sense of belonging, like on your application. And it can go for employees too, on your application, you have their name, their legal name, but then what would they like to be called by? So things like that. And it just talked about what are you doing to really make people feel inclusion? And so I think if, if I'm feeling exclusion at the, at the board level, what's happening within the institution? So as I said, it just seems like, it's just so blatant that, I mean, for the last two to three years in this blind, and I know I'm jumping around on this, but going back to why all of this is coming together. And I looked at this and I thought, oh, I'm standing right there, but I'm not even included. And, and I say this publicly here because I want employees to know, I want all the employees to know that I'm not blaming you for anything, I'm not chewing you out for anything. I don't want you to get chewed out for anything because however you act is because you've been emboldened. You don't just act that way. And so Rob Crane, Rob Crane, I don't want you to get in trouble for this because I've known you thirty years. known you 30 years, and I know you would not exclude me intentionally, but this needs to be addressed. We can't keep talking about, we are a united front, and then we have this internal stuff going on, on the board, and now I'm going to keep bringing it out, and that's all. And I wanted you to sit down because I didn't want you to think, oh, wow, she's calling me on the carpet. I'm not. I'm not calling anybody on the carpet. I am not, I don't want any employee to get in trouble for anything, because however you act toward me is because you've been emboldened.
Well, it's unfortunate at this point that we've just implied that any staff member would have done that on purpose, so at this point, I'd like to move on since that motion carried to the Vice President of Educational Innovation-
Yes, you can move on, because I've had the conversation with you-
And Global Programming Report. Dr. Raobi has a recorded video, but I hear that Dr. Mosher has an intro to that, so.
Yes, thank you Chair Isnar, and Dr. Raobi has provided a video report, but the reason why she's not here today, I think, is really important.
What country?
You know, what country? She's actually in the United States this time. Yes, yes. She was nominated and accepted to the Lakin Institute for Mentor Leadership, and for those that are not aware of that, that's sponsored by the National Council on Black American Affairs. It is a very prestigious leadership institute for up-and-coming, rising stars in the leadership field. So this week, she is at the Lakin Institute, and so happy for her to be there and be involved with that. It's a, it's a great, it's a great experience from everyone that I've spoken with. And with that, I will just go ahead and turn it over to Randy for her video presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you so much. As I present the report for educational innovation and global programming, that consists of adult and continuing education, high school partnership, online education services, international scholar services, and workforce innovation. In adult and continuing education, we continue to see rising enrollments. All of our GED and English language classes are growing with a waiting list, which indicates high demand. To date, we have 33 GED graduates from the University of Kansas Health System, and I'm excited to report that we started our partnership with Youth Ambassadors that focuses on empowering our youth through skills and job training and mentorship. We continue to increase our revenue by going after grants, particularly our WEOWA grant innovation, to help support kids on-campus programs. In high school partnerships, we are rocking and rolling. In collaboration with the Jenga Club, we're offering hands-on, industry-recognized certificates to Pro Tools Sound Engineering. We launched our Takeover Tuesdays and Thursday Initiative, where our high school partnership team are embedded in our high school, school district partners, and making sure that we're providing onsite counseling service and support in answering questions as needed. We are continuing to hold other events to help strengthen the relationship with our local school districts. Good job, team. In international and scholar services, not only have we seen a 40% increase in our international student visa holders, but we are fostering new opportunities to enhance comprehensive internationalization on the campus. For example, our SUNY Coalition Initiative, where we have a team of faculty and our online education service team, learning the best tools and techniques on how to do collaborative online international learning. We are partnering with great institutions to help build global awareness initiatives on the campus and figure out the best resources and how to support our international scholars here. Our Director of International Program and Scholar Services, Dr. Candace Scott, has been named the Kansas International Education Chair, and most recently presented at Regions Two NAFSA National Conference. These are just part of the efforts that we're looking to enhance partnerships, enhance global awareness, and make sure that we are having the right programs and support systems for our international scholars on campus. Thank you. In online education services, we've seen a successful transition to Blackboard Ultra, and we are here promoting new integration tools like the EAC for assessment and the AI tool in Blackboard Ultra. We really are focused on getting our faculty not only familiar with the technology, but thriving with the technology as they enhance their courses. Pictured here is part of our new VR, virtual reality content that we're developing in partnership, not only with some of our programs, but also with high school, with our high school partnership team, to help, to help promote and enhance KC KCC programs and instructional material. We're looking at new technology also to start badging and providing micro-credential options so that we are layering our programs and giving our students more, more opportunity to demonstrate their competencies and skills. Good job, online education service team. In workforce innovation, I mean, our Fall 2023 AET Fame Open House had 24 perspectives with 14 manufacturing partners. We've participated with our high school partnership team in high school open houses, for example, the Transition Day Event at Fort Riley and Advanced Manufacturing. We are continuing our partnership with local industries to not only promote our Fame and IMT program, but to also promote the opportunities that experiential learning could do for our students. And you don't want to hear it from me, hear it firsthand from what our students have to say.
This is Rich Piper at KC KCC Tech, and I'm here with Tom Pollard, who is currently working for Amsted Rail. And Tom, what do you do for Amsted Rail right now?
I am a maintenance mechanic.
All right, so my question to you, how will you do, I mean, after you finish the IMT program, what's the benefit to you?
After I pass this course, it'll be between an $8.70 raise and $12.00 raise, depending on how I test out.
Terrific. So this is what I know. Tom is the 12th IMT trainee to be sponsored for Amsted Rail. So you do the ROI on that and the impact the IMT program is making on our students.
That is so awesome, and I want to give a shout out to Coach Piper for having that recording, and I just want to make that correction. I meant to say Fall 2024. Excuse the typo and the misspeak. So we are not wrapped up yet. As you know, we are approaching our International Education Week, which is going to happen on the week of November 18th. We're having a major event, which is a partnership not only between Kansas City, Kansas Community College, K-State University, and AIEA, but also with our industry partners focused on the global workforce development, and we're be having the theme of a community college and university approach to preparing learners for global competency. This is a registration-based event, so we ask everyone to please register and plan to join us for an exciting discussion, featured dynamic keynote speakers and an engaging panel that's really going to be talking about what are those global skills and competencies that are required for today's workforce. Again, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you all engage in everything that we've got going on in educational innovation and global programming. Thank you.
All right, with Dr. Raobi out, if there are any questions, we can direct those to Dr. Mosher, otherwise I would call for a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report.
So moved.
So moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Marketing and Institutional Image Report by Ms. Green. Morning.
Well, this is a perfect segue. We started with workforce with Dr. Raobi, and now we're going to continue that, and we'll have Randy start that video where we were in with a company talking about the benefits of our Fame program.
Manufacturing is the backbone of the United States. Having a role and a function in the manufacturing sector is critically important.
The Advanced Manufacturing Fame Program has helped me, prepared me for being a homeowner, but it's also very good because job security, so you're going to have a job after it, because no one's just going to let go of somebody who has two years of experience in our field. You can throw a dart at a map, and I guarantee you can get a job in this field there, so it's very good.
Inks International got involved in Fame a few years back when we learned about the program. We were one of the charter members of establishing it. We're blessed to be sponsored by North American Manufacturing Association to support it across the nation. Then with the relationship with the college, they provide all of the training and education, and the manufacturers provide the practical experience and the mentorship that's coupled with the educational piece that keeps the uniqueness of the program strong.
It's very easy to be told how to do something and see somebody do it, but until you actually have to get doing it, it's a lot harder, because you're like, whoa, it looks so much easier. But, I mean, failure is the number one teacher, so you'll eventually get it down. KC KCC was the right choice for me because it was very affordable. I graduated with no student debt, and it was only a two-year commitment, because after high school, I really didn't know what I wanted to do, so it was a nice, building blocks ended up working out for me. Also, I grew up in Wyandotte County, so it was convenient.
Students should join the Fame program because it's a great career field to get into with innumerable opportunities for growth.
You can't get more powerful than that. And that young man, after finishing his Fame program, bought his first house, and that's what sparked the conversation between Rich, Dr. Raobe, and I, was that this was something we should record, and INX was, Inks was very generous in letting us inside the facility to get really good on-the-ground footage. So we'll be showing that everywhere very soon. Inks's legal team is doing its final review today, and we'll have it out and about as soon as we can. I want to thank my team. They are rock stars. They're very awesome and getting a lot of things done that you guys see every month and every day across campus. And as Dr. Mosher alluded to, we received six awards for our work. We received four gold awards, and that was for the Centennial Magazine, the Ride the Cyclone Theater poster, the All-American Athlete Social Media Post, and the Impact Microsite. What I love about those gold awards is it's not any one area of the work we do, but it's across a lot of areas of the college, showing kind of the depth of the quality of the team. We also won two bronze awards, and those were for the Blue Double Block Party T-shirt and an original photo taken at a basketball game. So I really am thankful for my team, but every day we see that work, they love to get that recognition as we go to that conference, and in fact, both Kelly and I presented at that conference. One was on our centennial anniversary, and we had lots of positive feedback about the depth and scope of the work we did, and then the other one was on our experience with Archer and Clarus. Clarus is our digital marketing provider, which I report back to you on marketing ROI, and Archer is our online journey and digital experience for students and our partnership. And that goes from now, pre-application, through admission, through enrollment. So our students will have that hand-holding experience, be able to find the information they need from the very beginning of an inquiry through the time they enroll with an advisor. So that's also been very exciting work, and we're in the middle of completing all of that paperwork so we can build that experience and hopefully have it go live early in November when spring enrollment's available. And then finally, I want to talk a little bit about our website redesign. UDL is our partner, and we have great, got those wireframes put together. We have had about half to two-thirds of our academic divisions turn in their surveys, and we are writing academic pages for all of our programs so that our students get the information they need, and we are getting very close to the point where we get to present to our administration what that new website might look like, what that research looks like, and get that buy-in before we move to the implementation stage of the project. With that, I will take any questions or comments the board might have.
You know, I tell you every time we meet, it looks great. It looks great. I'm so excited to see the level and the quality of work that you and your team are doing.
Thank you.
It's a great job.
Yeah, great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions, we have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to unfinished business, for which we have one item, and this is the revision of the KC KCC Board Assignments. This is with the change of our Chief Information Officer, we do need to designate our Board Freedom of Information Officer position, which is traditionally held by this, the college's CIO, which has recently been filled by Mr. Robert Walker. So at this time, I call for a motion to approve the revision of the KC KCC Board Assignments to include Mr. Walker as the college's Board Freedom of Information Officer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have new business, and I'd invite the presentation, actually, we already approved the contract after-
Oh, yes.
-the executive session, so we will skip that one. Moving to the approval of special course fees for Excel in Career and Technical Education, CTE, for high school, presented by Mr. Pope.
Hello again. The Excel and CTE course fees, these are course fees that are charged to our high school students for career and technical education programs. This is a new process by KBOAR, well, it's a few years old, but it's a new process. They are due to KBOAR by October 31st. Their staff then do their internal stuff, and they go to the KBOAR, I think it's probably the Technical Education Authority to be approved. It used to be January, but now they've moved that to February. So we've actually started pre-entering these, but of course, if there's any change to what we bring to you, we will make sure that those changes are notated. The reason we pre-enter it is because they do check every one of our entries, and there may be some, you know, pushback or whatever, or some clarification is more likely. So I tried to make this spreadsheet, Dr. Mosher and I worked on this a couple of years ago, to make it intuitive, the black font, our fees paid to KC KCC by the student. So they're attached to courses, they are paid to the college by the student, and then those funds are used to buy for those students what they paid for. The blue font are costs that go directly to the students. There may be a high school that has agreed to pay some of those costs. They are largely supplies that they can buy anywhere, so they don't have to buy them here, they can buy them anywhere. Also, sometimes graduation fees, and then in some cases, textbook. The far-right column shows the difference from last year to this year. This is a work in progress, so we're always trying to hone it in and make it as beneficial to the students as possible. I'll call your attention to some specific ones, so for example, automotive collision technology decreased by $495. There were some others that had similarly large decreases. That was due primarily to that program, sometimes it was a new instructor actually, but that program looking and determining that they could meet the students' needs by buying a classroom set of textbooks, and those textbooks were used over a number of years, and also a classroom set of tools. And so sometimes we were able to absorb that cost here at the college with minimal impact on the program. So you'll see some of those, a few programs increased because of just some changes in prices. The largest increase was the computer support area, which was due really to some certification changes in that program. So I'll ask, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Jerry, just for clarification, a lot of the, when he talks about classroom, equipment, toolsets, et cetera, those are mostly purchased through Perkins, correct?
I think so. We did review this in Finance Committee, and we had very few questions, because again, Jerry's right, we do it every year. When KBOAR changes their mind about something, then, you know, there, that's enough of that. But we did, the committee voted move it forward to the full board, so if you have any questions-
So if you have any questions, now's the time.
And the other thing I had mentioned before was especially like the high school students, do they get, do they know about these fees ahead of time? Because I don't know if you recall, that was the conversation we had. You know, if you don't, you think you're taking a course, and you know what the course is going to cost, and then you have a fee, so.
They do, they actually know about it a couple of ways. One, these high school fees are on our website once they're approved. They will go on our website for students to know. They also know when they enroll in those courses, but actually, any citizen of Kansas, or really anybody that can go to the website, so I shouldn't say citizen of Kansas, anybody can go to the Kbor website and see these fees published. So yes, we do try to be as transparent as possible with those.
But, you know, we can say, oh, anybody knows to go, but if you don't, you don't know what you don't know. So if you don't know about Kbor, the average high school student, what's Kbor? You know, they don't even know that. So that was the point I was making, like locally or within the schools, do they know about this? Because most people wouldn't know, don't even know what Kbor is. I bet you can go and ask anybody, what is Kbor? They don't know.
In some cases, Jerry, when they are high school students, do the high schools sometimes pay some of these fees?
Yes, some of the high schools do. And some of the high schools pay specific things, but not other things. So it's a little bit different for those high schools. But we do, to your point, Trustee Sutton, we do communicate to the high schools what these fees are. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Pope? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the special course fees for CTE for high schools.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, I'd invite the presentation of the Annual Medical and Dental Benefits Changes, presented by Ms. Mixon Page, Chief Human Resources Officer, and Dr. Schulte, Chief of Finance and Operations.
Oh, that's a little high. All right, hello. So I want to give you just a little bit of information about the 2025 benefit renewal rates that we have received, and all the information is in your board packet. So once again, the college has partnered with our health insurance broker, Bukati Companies, to look at the available options for healthcare benefits. Last year, we changed, as you know, from Aetna Insurance to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And at the time, Bukati, as part of their renewal process, or part of their bid process, asked for a renewal guarantee of twelve percent. So as we went out for bids this year, we were cognizant of that. They were able to successfully negotiate a seven point nine percent increase over the current rates versus that twelve percent rate cap that we had been guaranteed. Bukati also received a quote from United Healthcare. United Healthcare proposed a two point two-nine percent reduction in our current rates. However, we were not able to secure a rate cap guarantee from United Healthcare. A rate cap guarantee, as you know, would allow us to better manage our healthcare costs for the future. If we switch carriers again, there would be a second year, consecutive year of disruption to our current membership. We've not received any major complaints about the service from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So given the lack of a rate guarantee from United Healthcare, our recommendation is to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield for another year, for the 2025 Plan Year. For dental insurance, Delta Dental, last year, we benefited from a huge reduction in the insurance, in the dental rate. For the premiums for this year, Dental, Dental proposed a six percent rate increase, excuse me. So for the 2025 Plan Year, we will once again recommend Delta Dental. When we negotiated last year with our vision company, Surenci, and we did a multi-year renewal. So there is no change to the rates for vision, and so obviously, we recommend that we stick with them. So for 2025, we are recommending that the cost share for the employee and the employer remain the same. Specific premium rates, as I mentioned, are in your board packet, and Patrick and I are available for any questions that you might have about the financial impact.
I'm sure it's probably explained somewhere, but looking at this, this is a lot of work, and thank you all for, for providing this because I know to have health insurance is important. That's the draw for employees. But one is PPO Preferred Care Blue and Select Blue. So what's the, the real difference? And I know the Select Blue is, but the premium is just, no, it's a little bit lower, so.
Right, so the Select Blue is a high deductible plan, which means that the employees who take that would have to meet their deductible, which is a bit higher level than a traditional PPO plan offers.
Okay, so then the high deductible Preferred Care Blue is an even higher deductible. Is that what?
So the Preferred Care Blue, let me get to that page. I think it's the Plus Plan is one high deductible. They both have the same level deduction, but they are both, we have two high deductible plans. So we have the PPO Plan, two high deductible plans, and then our Spiral Care Plan, which is a much smaller network, but also more like a PPO in terms of the deductible.
I think I might be able to jump in and help Trustee Haskins Sutton too on that. The, if you're just asking between the two PPO plans, Blue Select Plus is a more narrow network than Preferred Care Blue. So Blue Cross Blue Shield refers to it as their I-35 plan, so it's most of the hospitals, just kind of core to the city.
Okay, all right.
And one of the things we plan to do this year is to make sure employees understand what hospitals are covered under which plan. I think that, again, with the switch last year, that was one of the concerns. Our goal this year is to try, try to drive people into some of the lower-cost plans that will overall benefit the college in terms of the premiums, rates that we get going forward.
Again, we reviewed in Finance Committee with the recommendation to move to the full board for approval.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Mixon Page? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the Annual Medical and Dental Benefits Plans?
So moved. Second.
So moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd invite the presentation of the Approval of the Alcohol Resolution for the Retirement Celebration of Patrice Townsend, presented by Dr. Mosier.
Thank you, Chair Isnard. And before I get into that, I would like to invite the board on Marcia's behalf. If anyone is interested in a tour of the Pioneer Career Center, we have people lined up. Marcia has people lined up to do that, so just go ahead and find her after the meeting. And with that, moving to the resolution, as Chair Isnard mentioned, Patrice Townsend is retiring from forty years of work at BPU. She's a KC KCC alum, as her, is her husband and daughter, and both, all three original dots, and they want to have a celebration for her forty years of service. So with, at that event, they would like to serve alcohol. So we have a resolution for that waiver. And hitting the highlights of that, as we all know, that per statutes, Kansas statutes 41719, it prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property, except where expressly permitted by law. And the board, as the governing body of KC KCC, does have the power to grant that exception. So we are looking, now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees that KC KCC hereby exempts for Saturday, November second, 2024, from five PM to nine PM at the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center, Room AA 101, which is the large conference room, from the requirement of KSA 41719D. So this exemption is granted in connection withholding the retirement celebration for Patrice Townsend, passed and approved by the Board of KC KCC in a meeting held on Tuesday, October fifteenth, 2024. Will look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Thank you, that motion carries. Brings us to the end of our agenda this morning. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you for Randy and the whole team for getting this set up. It's very nice, it's a lot of work.